Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council in regular session for Monday, August 7th, 2017, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Counselor Freeman?
Here.
Counselor Reed?
She is excused.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Parsons?
Here.
Counselor Herrera?
Here.
And Counselor Anderson?
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I know, play ball. Yeah, I believe the volcanoes are playing tonight.
Yeah, play ball.
At home. All right. We don't have anything under Special Orders of Business tonight, so we will go on to committee reports and start with the Volunteer Coordinating Committee Recommendations for Appointments to the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Volunteer Coordinating Committee met on July 20th, 2017, to review applications and interview candidates for an opening on the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee. The Committee is recommending Carla Schultis for position number four, term expiring November 30th, 2020. It is our recommendation. City Council will accept this recommendation for appointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Counsel President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve the appointment of Carla Schultis for position number four on the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee.
Second? It's been moved in the seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the recommendation and appoint Carla Schultis for position four on the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee for a term expiring November 30th, 2020. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Welcome Carla. Great work. Okay, back to my agenda here. I don't have anybody here who is representing a committee. Everybody who signed up is under public testimony, so is there anybody here to give a committee report as an official liaison from a committee? All right. We'll move on then to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have two public hearings tonight. One is a Pat's One Sig Liquor License Application Change of Ownership and the Kaiser Development Code Text Amendment, Section 2.303. So if you hear talk about those, we will take your testimony under the public hearings, and in the meantime, we will listen to everybody who has come tonight who has signed up under public testimony. There's one, though. Mr. Gore, so you're here to talk about the Item 8, 8C, the ordinance amending the medical marijuana facility hours and so forth. Mr. Johnson, so would it be appropriate to have him speak to us at that time? I know it's not a public hearing, but at least it'd be in context.
Totally up to council on how you want to deal with that procedurally.
Is everybody good with that? Okay, so we'll call you up to speak when we get to that agenda item, if that's all right with you. You might have to stay with us a little bit longer, but, okay. We're a fun crowd. All right. So first up, going in alphabetical order, Mr. Anderson. You're up for public testimony, and you have your five minutes, sir. Mr. Anderson?
Well, I've come up with an idea. Charles Anderson, Newburgh Drive. The school issue, of course. And I've come up with kind of an idea that I'm going to throw this out there and see if you like it, but it's assigned to put up on the gate.
If you want, hand it to the city recorder, please, and she will have that for the record then. Please proceed.
And not only could you put up a sign like that and lock the gate, you could also remove the gate, because it's not the, it's, from what I understand, it's not the school's property. It's in an intersection of two streets, and so you could remove it and put in a gate, a piece of fence there. So then there's no more locking the gate. It's a horrible problem that, obviously, that it's caused. It's, you know what's harmful to the residents that live on Newburgh Drive, and I'm curious of why you would even allow that to harm our lifestyle and cause the safety issues and everything. I'm just, I'm just bewildered why you would do that. So, anyway, I totally still see red on this issue and probably will to until you get it fixed. So that's about all I got to say right now.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you.
No questions.
Well, I said I was going to go alphabetical, so that would bring up Judy DeSpain.
Hello?
Hi.
Who knows why I'm here?
You wrote it on your form, but if you would just give your name and city of residence, and you have five minutes.
Judy DeSpain. And I'm here about the illegal fees that you want to add to our water and sewer bill.
And city of residence.
I'm sorry?
Name and city of residence, and then we'll start the...
Oh, Judy DeSpain, and I live in Kaiser, Oregon.
Thank you. You have your five minutes.
Citizen of Kaiser. And I'm here to talk about the illegal fee that you want to add to our water and sewer bill. And it is illegal, and you know it is illegal, I'm pretty sure. And when you took your oath of office to become councilor and mayor, you swore to uphold the city charter, the Oregon Constitution, and the U.S. Constitution. That is why you cannot legally add fees or taxes to our water and sewer bills. As you know, the water and sewer bill is addressed in the Kaiser City Charter, which was voted on and therefore amended by the citizens of Kaiser, and cannot be added to nor taken away from without a vote of the people. And I think you mentioned that when I was here last year, that it would be 2018 before you could vote, and you didn't want to wait that long. But that's the legal way to do it. Under Oregon's Constitution of Home Rule, the citizens decide any change by vote. You, as a council, do not have the legal authority to add any third party to our water and sewer bills. Under Oregon Constitution Home Rule, provisions Article 6, Section 10, the voters of the cities only have the power to adopt and amend their own charters. You can't amend our charter, which says, it's clear in Chapter 9, Section 36, that procedure for levying, collecting, and enforcing the payment of special assessments, like police and parks, for other services is to be charged against real property. Real property means land. The only way for you to legally increase the funds for police and parks is through property taxes, which must be voted in by the people. The only way for you to add anything to our water and sewer bills is by a vote of the people. I would encourage this council to not do an illegal act, which would have to be dealt with. It would be extremely informative if the Kaiser Times would print the Kaiser City Charter in the paper. That's all. Thank you.
Hang on. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Spain? No questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I believe this was also a letter to the editor in the paper. Am I correct? That was in the Kaiser Times. So people who have had a chance to read the text of this, of Mrs. Spain's testimony as well. Thank you. All right. Okay. We could have a conversation about the legality, but I think it's our turn to listen at this point, so I think we'll just leave it at that unless the council would like to get an opinion from our city attorney on this matter. Okay, seeing none. We'll move on then to, moving down the alphabetical list. Carol Dorfler is here, and city, sorry, Swainy, talk about the inclusivity resolution. Name and city of residence, and, oh, and could you do me a favor and pull the microphone down closer?
Closer.
Pull the whole thing.
Both of them. There you go.
And more.
More? Yeah.
Please. Okay. I know, Carol, you project well.
Yes. Yes, I do.
Now we can hear you. Thank you.
Carol Dorfler, I live in Kaiser. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak publicly this evening. I would, I am here as a citizen and as a member of the group of the inclusivity resolution, and I would like to thank Eric Holland for his editorial that was in the Kaiser Times on August 4th. If you haven't seen it, it should be required reading. It is a very, it's not very long. It's only two columns, and it is such a simple explanation of why this resolution is needed. And it boils down to three words. Two words. Words matter. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much.
I'm Cindy Swainy from Kaiser, and I too would like to thank Eric publicly for the, for what he wrote. And I would like to bring back to last work session. You had mentioned us having a second work session possibly, and I'm here tonight to just ask if we could get that scheduled or start talking about when we're going to have that second work session.
We'll have to take a look at that. The summer has been what it is, and we have this little thing coming up called the eclipse, once the things kind of clear up. Have not forgotten, though, and have given it a great deal of thought. And I know all of us have given it a great deal of thought, the conversations that we had. I would also like to give a shout out to Eric Howell for that editorial. I thought it was extremely well, well put and very well thought out. And the Kaiser Times should be proud to have someone who has that clear thinking working there. So we will move forward, but at this point, we have just not been able to see clear to continue that conversation at this point, but it is not forgotten. But I can't schedule that right now. We'll, we'll work as a council. I'll work with our staff to talk about what we're going to do and what the objectives are. You know, what were the takeaways from last time, and what are the things we want to accomplish with that. So put together a proposal that we can say, okay, these are the pieces based on that conversation that we can move forward with and what the ideas might be. Would that be all right? It's not much of an answer, but it's kind of where we're at.
Yeah, no, we just wanted to come back and make sure that you know that we're still interested in supporting and getting the information out as well.
Absolutely. All right. Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much, and...
Thank you.
Keep, keep on it. Okay. D E F, Frye. That is such a cool ball.
Hi, I'm Wayne Frye, president of Kaiser for two and a half years, and I love Kaiser and I want to make it better. I'm here tonight to ask the permission to create and maintain a soccer field at Country Glen Park. I will provide the materials, and I will maintain the park. I'll provide the goalpost. I'll do the weed whacking, and I'll paint the lines. I've got a line striper. And this is my, I've already done two soccer fields previously in Ontario, Oregon, one for the Kiwanis Club and one for the Boys and Girls Club. Here's a few pictures I'd like to share.
If you could hand them to Tracy, and then she'll be able to pass them around. Thank you.
So what I always like to do is to create a place for children to have a healthy, positive activity, and a place, a community soccer field, where parents can practice with their kids, a place where elementary kids can play after school. It's near Gupsir Elementary. And so that's what I would like to do. What I would look forward from the city council is approval to move forward with creating and maintaining a soccer field. No cost to the city. I will purchase the equipment. I will do the maintenance, and I'll be happy to do that.
All right. I'm going to start off with questions from the city manager, and then I'll come to Counsel President Parsons.
So my only question, and I actually only have one, is parking.
That was mine.
How are you going to manage parking for, for a field in that area? Where would people park? I mean, the neighborhood is, there isn't formalized parking for that park.
That's correct. It's pretty narrow, and it's, I've been to the park several times. I ride my bike there. There's room for about 17 cars on the park side. There's also room, additional parking on the residence side. Residents probably don't really want people parking right in front of their house. But about 17 cars, maybe 20. Additional parking could be at Gupsir Elementary, three tenths of a mile away, parking lot there.
Do you think the school would allow that?
I haven't asked. I haven't asked them.
Because that seems like a better solution than flooding the neighborhood with a bunch of cars, so.
Be educated to, encouraged to park there. It's not, it's not a long walk.
That's right. We have that footbridge between...
That footbridge is where it would be. It's three tenths of a mile.
And you're thinking of, this be a practice field, there'd be one field. You're not talking about tournament play and things like that, where you end up with tremendous numbers.
Looking at a community practice field.
Community practice field.
It's a space large enough for 40 by 100. Actually, a smaller field would be a little more appropriate. Kids would get better skill practice and not so much running and not so much long-distance kicking. Something more like 40 by 80 yards. It could also be two smaller fields.
Two smaller practice fields?
Yeah.
Counsel President, that was your other question. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So parking was my first question, which you addressed. I'm wondering, I've heard of some challenges in the past when teams want to know, how do they sign up for it? I mean, obviously, there's a need, and I appreciate you addressing it. I'm wondering, you know, is there a general number? Do they need to go through the city to sign up? How are they going to do that so it's equal, equal playtime for all the teams?
I presented this to the Parks Advisory Board, and what they suggested was first come, first serve. I've also talked with Kaiser Soccer Club.
Oh, you're good.
Thank you for the extra time. I've talked with Kaiser Soccer Club. They might use it as a practice field, but I'm not really seeing it as a tournament field. It's more of a community practice field. First come, first served.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Herrera?
Yep. Primarily, with this field, I mean, you're going to have a bunch of games on the weekends, or mostly practice, is what I'm thinking.
They can practice there. If they get their neighborhood games, they get a group of kids together. Sure.
I happen to live on the 50-yard line across from the, and I'm kind of excited to have people, but in talking to the neighbors, the main concern, of course, was parking. I, I can see, you know, I can see it work for practicing and stuff like that. Now, for games, like one after another, that change in between games, I can't see that working from, from talking to neighbors. I kind of agree with that. But we're kind of, in general, the people on that street, which are directly across, in general, the four people I talked to, they, they would not mind having a practice facility there. I mean, the one question they asked was, who's going to pick up the garbage? And they all looked at me, of course. But I really like the idea of having another facility for soccer. I used to do the, paint the ones at Whittaker, eight, 12 fields, and it's a lot of work, so I know the work involved. And I'm also willing to help down the road if I can, but...
I have my own line striper.
Oh, good.
I'll paint the lines.
I have one, too. Okay, well, that sounds good. But I was concerned about the situation as far as parking, because if it's going to be a game situation, like on weekends, then it could be a, it could alter a lot of people's comfort zone, what they're doing now, you know?
So not so much a tournament field. I'm looking at a community practice field for parents. I've seen boys and girls play at the same time. I've seen parents play with their kids. I've seen the high school soccer team from the soccer field in Ontario. They practiced there. They went to state that year. Just to mention, Counselor Herrera, he told me he picks up the trash at this park for many, many years. So thank you.
Thank you. So I've got a question for Mr. Lawyer. Is this in the Parks Master Plan, and would a change have to be made to allow for this use?
I believe the Parks Master Plan does allow for a multi-use field at Kaiser, or Country Glen, excuse me. So there's no amendment or change to the master plan necessary, and I'm very happy to hear that Mr. Frye's vision is a first come, first serve, or I say, non-reservable field, because that reservable field in that location, as has been discussed, would create parking problems. So, yeah.
So with the concurrence of council, have Mr. Frye work with you to bring up a proposal on what this would look like in a more formal manner?
Yeah, work with me and Robert.
To move this project forward?
Absolutely. Robert and I can work with him to, to get it moving. Absolutely. I know Robert's talked with Mr. Frye at the Parks Board level, so I would probably just defer to Robert on this.
Okay.
And have him work with Mr. Frye and make it a reality.
And then, did the Parks Board vote on this formally, or did they just say, hey, I think this is a lovely idea, but more concurrence?
They did make a positive recommendation to send to city council.
Okay. Any objection from council to have Mr. Frye work with Mr. Lawyer to formalize this, to make sure it will work with our maintenance long-term? Because that's a big thing. We want to make sure whatever is made, I know you're going to do it for now, but as much as most of us don't want to think about it, we're not here forever. So we want to make sure this slides into and is aligned with our long-term maintenance.
Sure.
So it remains usable and safe for the kids coming out there and adults to come out and play. All right. I don't see any objections. City Manager, any questions or concerns?
No, the only, the only concern I had was parking, and I would, I, we all know how things happen, so over time, I anticipate that this will become, there'll be pressure for this to be utilized for weekend games and tournaments and whatnot. And if that happens, we're going to have to have another discussion, I believe, where parking is mandated to be out of that neighborhood and have people walk in for the games and tournaments, which you have a lot more control over for a game or a tournament, because as people are signing up, they would have to agree to the parking requirements, et cetera. So, but no, that was really my only concern.
All right. Okay.
Thank you, council.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the volunteers, man. That is a very cool soccer ball.
I would like to put this ball into use as soon as possible. Thank you, council.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, and that takes us then to working down the alphabet. Mr. Weekly. And he's here to talk about McNary High School.
Hi, my name's Jeff Weekly. I live on Newburgh Drive in Kaiser, Oregon. I am here to talk about the parking issues from the school and the gate at MacArthur. You all are elected officials. You are elected by the citizens to represent the citizens. I have spoken to the people that live on Newburgh, north of MacArthur, on the east side, and have learned that they had given up their property for that entrance off of Lockhaven with the understanding to the city and to the school board that that gate on MacArthur was to remain locked at all times except for Friday night football games. You have violated their rights. They gave up their property for that entrance, and you have violated their rights by not enforcing the school district to keep that gate locked, except for Friday night football games. The city manager just brought up the issue with the soccer fields. You want to be considerate of those neighbors, but not considerate of us on Newburgh. I find that offensive. I know the school is about to begin in September, and I really wish that the city council, and I know you can, because the city council was involved in the forcing closure of Sandy and Robindale. So I know you can force the school board to listen to the citizens of Newburgh Drive and MacArthur and Max Court and make them lock that gate, except for Friday night football games.
Good. All right. Any questions for Mr. Weekly? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. So that concludes the people who I have signed up for public testimony. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council tonight?
Just a real quick informational piece. The school district is going to have, or actually, not the school district. McNary High School is planning on having a neighborhood slash community outreach forum to talk about their future plans, parking, these issues, specifically what you're talking about, on October 12th. So they'll be reaching out to the neighborhood, but it's on October 12th at 6:00 PM at the school, and so I encourage both of you to be there for that. They do have a long-term plan, and it's not all that long-term. So they're working on it, and just wanted you to be aware that that's going to be happening.
So October 12th, 6 o'clock, any community members are welcome to come and listen to the presentation from the school board.
And it's going to be, it's going to be a dialogue.
Dialogue. Okay.
I do have a question, if I could. Did...
You'll have to come up to the microphone so people can hear you.
At the end of the school year, they, they said that they may open the gates over on Sandy, and so there's no word of anything like that. And in the meantime, why don't we try to lock the gate first and then have them have the forum and the meeting to unlock it again and see if they get any support on that side of the deal? See, we're getting the raw end of the deal here.
Yeah, and so, you know, I've, I've had continuing discussions with, with the school district, with McNary High School, as have, as Chief Teague, and he can verify what I'm going to tell you here. You know, we've had those discussions about opening Sandy. We've had discussions about closing Newburgh as of, within the last 30 days, and they were at one point receptive to opening Sandy and have become unreceptive to that concept. And so their mind is changing through this discussion as well. But we are continuing to have discussions with them on this topic. And so they're, they're going to, so when you say to me, why don't we try, we don't have a piece of that decision-making. So we are continuing to have conversation with them and trying to work with them to come up with new solutions or to push old solutions, and they have been not willing to make those changes yet until they develop their long-range plan that may include those solutions. But they want to look long, not the next couple of weeks. So, and by long, they're talking in the next year and a half. So not, so it'll be another season of bad traffic for you all.
I'm dead.
Well, unless you have some significant health concerns that you're not showing us here.
I can.
Sorry, that was attempted to be a joke and probably didn't come across well. But probably a year and a half out is when they're talking about making some of the solutions reality, part of their long-range plan.
But how could it...
So, anyway.
This is not intended to be a back-and-forth kind of discussion. I just want to let you know.
You mentioned in a correspondence I had with you about forcing the, forcing the school to lock the gate, and you said, you referred to it as a bullying tactic. And that's what your words were in a, in an email I got from you. And, but it's quite the opposite. The school is the one doing the bullying here to all the neighbors here that are complaining about it. And, and also, it's been raised up about the seniority of the neighborhood, that the school has a higher seniority rating. Not that that should make any difference, but be known that people that signed that petition have, some of those people have been here longer than the school has. So, I mean...
Mr. Anderson, I am, I am sympathetic and empathetic with your, with your cause. I am, or I would not be continuing to have discussions month after month with the school about it, because it's frustrating for me also, okay? I mean, on both sides of this. I mean, on both sides of this. We are separate governmental entities, okay? We can't force them to do things, they can't force us to do things, but we are in constant dialogue about this topic. And hence, October 12th is coming right up, and they're going to be discussing this topic. I encourage you to show up. That's your best opportunity to have, in effect, change is with the school, because that is their, that's their decision to make.
The problem I see with October 12th, it's the same problem that I saw with what came out on the newspaper about the school may open Sandy, is that it's a delay thing. And the same thing, by the time October 12th gets here, the gates have already been kept open.
I don't see, I don't see this as a delay. I see this as them wanting to have their ducks in a row so they can have good information to share with you. So, I truly, I truly believe that.
Okay.
October 12th, that'll be a good community conversation for parents, students, and neighbors. Okay. That will take us then into our public hearings. We have two tonight. We'll start off with item 7A, which is Public Hearing on Pat's One Sig Liquor License Application Change of Application, Change of Ownership. Like to open the public hearing. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On July 3rd, 2017, the city received an application for a change of ownership for the liquor license for Pat's One Sig located at 4486 River Road in Kaiser, Oregon. The Oregon Liquor Control Commission requires a new application when changing ownership, location, or license type. As required by Kaiser Ordinance, a public hearing was scheduled, and notice was published and mailed to all property owners within 200 feet of the proposed establishment. As of this date, no response has been received from the property owners. Upon completion of a background check of the new owners, the Kaiser Police Department reported that there were no reasons to recommend denial of this application. It is recommended that public hearing be opened to allow testimony, and upon completion, the hearing be closed. It is further recommended that the city council recommend approval for the application for a change of ownership under the guidelines established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and then will forward the recommendation to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for their final dispensation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report? Seeing none, I don't have anybody signed up to speak under public testimony on this hearing. Is there anybody who would like to address the council on this change of ownership application? Okay, seeing none. Close the public hearing. Council President Parsons.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve the application for a change of ownership under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser. This recommendation shall then be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for the change of ownership under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and that this recommendation shall be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us then to item 7B, which is the Kaiser Development Code Text Amendment, Section 2.303, Off-Street Parking and Loading. Like to open the public hearing. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown.
Thank you. As indicated in your staff report, this proposed text amendment has gone through the Planning Commission and comes to you with a unanimous recommendation of support for the proposed changes. I might just, to start the discussion off, I'd like to point out that there's a lot of red there, but there's not a lot of substance that is of controversy or of something that would create somebody any grief. It was actually triggered because of our work with the proposed theaters, and it was pointed out that our old code had theaters listed under two different categories with two different numbers, which was a problem. But it also forced us then to get into the ordinance and look at all the other things that needed to be clarified and simplified. So, all of the red that you see, for example, the table that has been stricken, it's just simply been reformatted. Our intent here is to make it understandable for not just us, but for everybody else in the world. There are a couple of other things that have been included, which were a result of a dialogue with our environmental division. For example, the addition of "All vehicles are subject to the regulations prohibiting illicit discharge as governed by applicable city requirement, regulations." It's kind of a no-brainer there, but it was important to include for the overall picture and our desire to be clear and straightforward in our regulations. So, without going through every, every line on it, I think what I would do is just basically, well, again, so theater is now established clearly as one space for every four seats. It's included with the house of worship and auditorium category. It's the same kind of parking requirement, and so we've established that at one per four. That actually comes with a comparison with several other jurisdictions. As with anything we bring to you, we always check to make sure that our neighboring jurisdictions are, we make sure, we do a reality check to make sure that what we're doing is, is not just drummed up from, from my brain. So, we then, I honestly don't see anything that would be of significant necessity unless you have a specific question about a requirement. Rather than take the time here, this is available on our website. It will be available in the code, as with everything that we do. There are a couple of things that we include, the strengthening of the planting of trees. We want trees incorporated even adjacent to buildings, but we allow some flexibility as to where they'll be located. We, we also included at the suggestion of our stormwater professionals that all trees must be planted in proximity to proposed parking areas, but at a minimum, one-third of the, sorry, one-third of the diameter of the proposed mature tree canopy shall at least provide shade to the parking area. In order, try to eliminate some of those heat islands that we generate from massive parking areas. But at the same time, providing some flexibility as to how they're located and how, how it is actually implemented. So, other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and provide any more specific information that you may need.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? I have one, and that is on, on page 12 of the packet. It's on page three of the, of the ordinance, of the, that section is 2.303.04, item F, and then the last line of the paragraph is the ad. "All vehicle storage areas must be served by a driveway." So this is not talking about the theater, this is talking about residential, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, please define driveway, is that a curb cut?
That is correct.
So the people who put, who have storage spaces for recreational vehicles right now, but they don't have a curb cut, they would not be allowed to use that space anymore? When they back in their trailer and they put some ramps and they get it up over the sidewalk and then they take the ramps away?
Well.
Which happens in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
Everybody does it.
There is the question about whether they have the established use, and does that become non-conforming? It'd be pretty hard for them to be able to document that. The reality is, is that they should be using driveways.
Okay.
As defined in our street standards and the development code.
True, but there's a lot of older lots that are, have been flexibly used.
Sure, sure.
In my, my neighborhood, I live in an older neighborhood, just across the way from, from the high school. Okay.
So the difficulty is, if there is no driveway, there is generally a planter strip. We do not want, and we have no way to regulate, how frequently do they do that? Do they do it once a year? No big deal. Do they do it three times a week? That becomes a deal.
Well, if there's a planter strip. I mean, there's, there's something that's across sidewalk and it's into their side yard.
Yeah. Well.
But with that, with those grandfather-in, as they are used right now? I mean, clearly, people are parking there, they're putting their RVs, you know, obviously, I don't live at McNary, and boats and things like that, so.
Sure, if it became an issue, if it, we don't have an RV police department, so, at least I don't think so. So if it became an issue, then they would have to document that it was indeed established before the change in this regulation. And if they could document that, then it would be, it would be considered as an established use, legally non-conforming, so.
All right, any other questions? And I don't have anybody who has signed up to testify on this issue. Is there anybody who is here tonight who would like to speak on this issue? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. And Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to prepare an ordinance with findings to adopt the proposed revisions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to come back with an ordinance to adopt the, sorry. The proposed revisions to the development code. Friendly amendment to remove the line at the end of paragraph F, "All vehicle storage areas must be served by a driveway." Take that back out. Would you accept that?
I'd accept that.
Would the second accept it?
Could you restate that, Mayor?
Item 2.303.04, Location and Use Provisions, Subsection F, last line of the paragraph, it's red letter, "All vehicle storage areas must be served by a driveway." And that's why I asked the question about the curb cut, because not everybody's got them, where they are currently storing their, anyway. I can't debate it first, I just need to know if it's going to be accepted or if you need a separate motion.
So I need a second, then I can ask my question?
You need to accept it, or like, you need to accept it or not accept it, and then we'll take the next step, because you have the second.
I'll accept it.
All right, so that has, change has been made. Counselor Freeman, you had another comment?
Well, I guess, just piggyback on what Nate said, because I also too live in an older neighborhood and have cement that's been poured 27 years ago, that was for an RV pad. Unfortunately, my gutters are too low, so you could never technically put an RV there. But you would have to go over the curb to really, unless you're fabulous at backing up and putting it right there. But I guess, do we need to be clearer, more defined? Or are we just going to say, if we take this out, we're grandfathering in older homes or older neighborhoods? I guess I'm seeking clarity from your statement based on the mayor's question. Do you understand where I'm going?
Yes, I think so. I'm just not sure how to provide it. The intent here is that if you have a vehicle storage area, an RV storage area, you need to have an appropriate surface for it. So, if that, if indeed, as suggested, that that be removed, I mean, I think we are covered elsewhere. I think we are covered with, and the surface must be a hard, dust-free, durable surface. So, I don't think, I don't think that that would be a game changer to delete that sentence.
Okay, thank you.
And just to my, my point here was, the question when it came to curb cut, that's what my concern was, because we have people moving in and out. There isn't appropriate surface in, not all, but in most cases, for the parking of the vehicle. It's getting in and out necessarily, and it may not already be a cut driveway. It's just how that property has developed over the decades. And I don't want to put people in a position where they've got to apply for a second driveway permit to put that in there. So that's where I'm coming from. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, off of your last statement, you said it had to have a durable, you know, I've seen older homes with, you know, kind of the attached side type, almost shed-looking things that's like gravel, grass, in their property. Does that disqualify them?
Well, so what you see around the community is a, is a collection of several decades of construction. Some of that, that you see, does not comply with setbacks, does not comply with building code requirements, et cetera, et cetera. If there is a vehicle on the ground, it needs to be on an appropriate surface. The, the code develops that and tries to identify that in terms that gives some flexibility, but is intended to make sure that people aren't just creating mud holes into the community and for neighbors to deal with runoff and all, all of those problems that that generates.
So, the ones that come to mind specifically, and I have never actually looked for this, but that's their private property. So if it's a mud hole, it's their mud hole, right?
It rains here, and, and water never stays put.
Okay, so, so then that leads me to kind of off of, mayor's, mayor's question is, could we, could we move forward with new construction only and grandfather and those that already exist?
That actually goes without saying in our development code, in that if you have a legally established use and that use is maintained, then we have a whole section that, that deals with just that subject, on non-conforming uses. So that's already built into the code, and that would be, it'd be, you would put that in every paragraph in the code, kind of thing. So I would not suggest that we need to add that, to be clear about that.
I just don't want anyone to feel like we're requiring them to spend money or lay pavement or something like that on their own property when it's their personal property. And, and I get the curb thing, I see it as two different things, so I just want to make sure that we're kind of all speaking the same. Text amendment code language.
All right. With the deletion that the mayor suggested, my friendly amendment, the rest of that section is the current language, so we're not changing anything. So it's the thing that's been there for a while, I was, I'm not sure, the date on here is 2015, but I think that was a, an earlier change. I think this has been the same for quite a while, so I don't think you're really changing anything.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I think we had made some changes in 2015, had to do with some of the RVs or the fencing or something. Anyway, Counselor Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that, the way you put it, if it's not, if it's not a game changer, to me, it makes sense to have the amendment. Because I, I don't know, I used to read meters in this town, and there's a lot more of those than you think. And they're all, I don't, I don't, I see the potential for having runoff in that situation. But in general, I think they're all pretty older neighborhoods and they're established, you know, even have gravel through the grass or whatever, but, so I don't think it would do no harm and less hassle to me. That's what I would think. I know in my neighborhood, we have some, they don't bother nobody, I mean, really.
Well, and keep in mind, we all, we all like to think of the best-case scenario, but the reality is, we regulate for the worst-case scenario. And many people put things in the gutter to provide their own driveway. And in many cases, those obstacles then become catchers for other debris and those kinds of things. So, remember, we're, we're not regulating for the responsible person here only. We are regulating for everybody and for the maintenance of the facilities that are established by the city. And, I'm sorry, putting two-by-fours, et cetera, in the gutter is not appropriate for our storm system.
I agree, this is there, and they definitely are a problem catching debris. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say how much I appreciate you catching that. This is a great point that you're making, and, and I fully am supportive of deleting that sentence. I don't believe it should be there, period. And sorry, but it just doesn't, should not be there. We've got to be able to accommodate people who have done their due diligence and tried their best to facilitate this. You're still, they are still required regarding. You're still, uh, they are still required, uh, regarding how their, these parking areas are surfaced. Uh, that's existing code here, so I don't think we're, this doesn't, this changes nothing, and I think it just accommodates people adequately. So I appreciate that. And I can tell you, on my street, which is an older street, been around for at least 60 years, that, um, I think two of my neighbors, uh, three of my neighbors have curb cuts, and they are, or access to their driveways. One does not, but he's got it all squared away according to this language, so.
Well, I think, I think that was an important point, though, that if people do use accessory items to move that thing across, um, into their parking area, they need to be moved, uh, you know, leaving them there is not an option. And under our current code, I don't believe they're supposed to leave them there. Am I correct? If people put two-by-fours or ramps or something like that to move trailers or other things, they can't leave them in the street. Am I correct? They're, they're not supposed to.
There you go. Are we comfortable with that last statement?
They're not supposed to, okay. So that doesn't, that's, that still is an effect, and picking up those things and moving them is still some, on the owner to be responsible. Okay, any further debate? I didn't mean that to turn that into a huge thing, but that one caught my attention. But I appreciate the thought that went into, uh, developing the changes here to accommodate the theaters and make it consistent. Uh, further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with the one change, and we'll see that come back to us as an ordinance. That concludes our public hearings for tonight. That moves us now into administrative action. And we will start off with, um, with the indulgence of the council. Can we move item C first since, uh, Mr. Gore is here? And, um, I'd like to give him the opportunity to speak. Would that be all right with you, change the order? All right, so we will start off then with item 8C. An ordinance amending the ordinance adopting the Kaiser Medical Marijuana Facility Permit Process, Amendment of Ordinance Number 2014-702. And we will also be dealing with the ordinance amending the ordinance adopting the Kaiser Marijuana Retailer Permit Process, Amendment of Ordinance Number 2016-743. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City attorney?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and council. This matter came before council, I believe, at the last meeting. Uh, and, uh, council directed us to look into this in return for a possible consideration of changing the hours for, um, marijuana retailers. As council knows, there is a, also a medical component, although as a practical matter, my understanding is most retailers operate with a recreational license and are allowed under the relatively newer state laws to also sell medical marijuana as, as part of that, and OLCC is starting to take over all the regulation of that. We looked at the state law, and the state law for retailers, in other words, the non-recreational marijuana is at the state level 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, as Mr. Gore indicated. We weren't able to find anything on the medical side in terms of restricted hours, but the suggestion that we would have is, if the council wants to change the hours, that it would be appropriate to change them for both, rather than have different hours, wouldn't, wouldn't make any sense. So if you're looking at changing that, and that's the reason for the two separate ordinances. So with that, I have, uh, prepared some short ordinances to change those sections of both the, um, Medical Marijuana Facility Permit Process, as well as the Kaiser Marijuana Retailer Permit Process, in other words, recreational marijuana. And they're there for your consideration, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Okay, seeing none, um, I would like to invite Mr. Gore to come and speak to us, if you would like to. You've got, okay. If you want to give that to the city reporter, then she can get us that information. All right, thank you. Thank you for hanging there with us, and you have, uh, five minutes to address the council. Thank you for bringing this issue to us.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable council members and staff members, and good evening, fellow citizens that are here with us tonight. Uh, my name is David Gore. Uh, I am a resident of Salem, and I'm a business owner here in Kaiser. Uh, I'm here tonight as a follow-up and an update to, um, my request on July the 17th, um, last month. Since the last meeting I attended, July the 17th, Kush Dispensary was spotlighted on the cover of Kaiser Times. More of our customers have realized there is a possibility for a change. And they have signed and, uh, that, put their signatures on our cause to support, to expand our hours of operation for their convenience and for our livelihood. I wanted to thank, uh, the city attorney, Mr. Johnson, Madam Mayor, and honorable council members, Mr. Epley, Mr. Nate Brown, and Police Chief Teague, for y'all's due diligence, uh, in this, uh, matter concerning the ordinance, and, uh, for hopefully changing and amending this ordinance. Thank you very much.
I was just going to keep mine really short, just because I know you guys are on a timeframe and running on a schedule and have a lot to go through. But I do want to say thank you for taking the time to go through this and hopefully changing our hours. Like I've mentioned in the last meeting, it does affect them when they have to work and we're not open. But I did also realize, if it helps, they don't have to look for it illegally after hours as well, because I don't want that system to keep running. I do like that we have regulations for marijuana, because it's better to keep laws than no laws on it. And I just want to say thank you, and you guys do a lot. I didn't know you guys do this much for Kaiser. And let's just keep Kaiser strong and keep it going.
All right, and could you say your name again for the record?
My name is Laura Viegas. I live in Salem, but I work in Kaiser.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody have any, uh, questions for Ms. Viegas or Mr. Gore? Um, Councilor Herrera?
Actually, a comment, uh, first of all, I do want to tell you that I did visit your place.
I heard, yeah.
And, uh, I was really impressed with, it looked like a drugstore.
It's, it's not, we, we work very hard.
And you know, when I talked to a couple people, uh, the Bud Tenders, I guess, is it called?
Yes, Bud Tenders.
I was actually impressed with the situation, and I, I am kind of, I'm in favor of the situation. I do, um, don't believe there should be two different hours for two different, uh, uh, medical and the, I think it should be consistent. My son said, explain that to a stoner, you know, two different hours. But, but I think it's a, it's, I don't think it's any harm, because, I don't know, do you see any, any, um, I, I keep asking Chief Teague, but I, we haven't had any, that I know of, of problems in terms of.
There's so many cameras around that place.
Oh, yeah, no, I did notice myself.
The security is really, really good.
Don't publish my pictures.
Really, really good.
Okay, well, but I mean, I think, I think that, uh, it's something that, that I would like to see consistent for both, you know, that's kind of what I was thinking, but. And thank you for making your presentation. I really appreciate you guys coming up and.
Well, thank you all very much for listening to us.
Speaking of your business.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you staying with us.
And I did leave the rest of the petition signatures with her.
Okay, so Ms. Davis has the, uh, the petition, so that will be entered into the record. Thank you for bringing that. Um, Council President Parsons, would I put a motion on the table?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance adopting the Kaiser Medical Marijuana Facility Permit Process, Amendment of Ordinance Number 2014-702.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance amending the ordinance adopting the Kaiser Medical Marijuana Facility Permit Process, Amendment of Ordinance Number 2014-702. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, one absent, and that's kind of for the whole evening, but I keep on forgetting to mention that part. All right, uh, second one.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance adopting the Kaiser Marijuana Retailer Permit Process, Amendment of Ordinance Number 2016-743.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance amending the ordinance adopting the Kaiser Marijuana Retailer Permit Process, Amendment of Ordinance Number 2016-743. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Thank you very much. And this goes into effect thirty days.
In, in thirty days.
In thirty days, all right. Um, let's then go back up to the top of the order, which would be item 8A, the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce request for community center rental fee waiver. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You'll recall, or maybe you won't, um, during this 2017-18 Kaiser budget proceedings, uh, the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce submitted a request, um, for some budgetary assistance in certain areas. Uh, one of those areas was to have five events with the fees waived, uh, at the Kaiser Community Center here. Four of which would be for what they're coining as community conversations, where the entire community would be invited to participate at no charge. Uh, and then the, uh, fifth event would be their annual, um, for citizens banquet. Since then, Mrs. Bethel, Danielle Bethel, who is the executive director for the chamber, has subsequently, uh, asked for, um, a, an additional reduction in fees for their month, uh, to move their monthly, um, luncheons here and have a reduced rental rate every month for those events, which are, uh, which are ticketed events, and, uh, raise revenues for the chamber, as does the, uh, for citizens banquet. So just for your information, as a 501(c)(3) based in Kaiser, the Chamber of Commerce qualifies for a 25% resident discount anyway on our fees. So, uh, any fee they're charged already has a 25% discount, but they're asking for you to consider an additional discount for them, for their monthly luncheons. And then to waive the fees for their, for citizens banquet, and to permit for community conversations if you have charge, so. Tracy actually did a real nice job, uh, working through the staff report and broke down the potential costs for each of the different types of, um, activities. First one being the for citizens banquet, uh, second one being the community conversations, third one being the monthly luncheon forums. It is recommended that city council discuss, discuss each type of event separately and consider options presented, and then direct staff accordingly. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report? Uh, Councilor Anderson?
Just a slight detail here, um, the chamber is not a 501(c)(3). That's a nonprofit organization.
They're a 501(c)(6), if I remember correctly.
And I think it's 501(c). I think they also qualify, any, any nonprofit or charitable organization qualifies for the community discount.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make a distinction, because a (c)(3) is, that's a charitable organization.
You're right, thank you.
I believe the, the Kaiser, and I'm, I'm not a tax person, but I believe the Kaiser Foundation, the Chamber Foundation is a 501(c)(3).
Right.
And the Chamber of Commerce, chambers of commerce are 501(c)(6)'s, if I remember correctly. But, uh, like I said, I'm not a tax person, I don't play one on TV. Um, so, uh, I agree with the recommendation that we take these separately. So we'll start off with the, uh, the request for a waiving of fees for the, uh, for citizens banquet. I think that was the first one up.
I will mention that, um, Mrs. Bethel provided additional information for you. It was submitted to you, and yet each of your seats, and I believe it is a fiscal breakdown of that particular event. So you might review that as you're discussing this particular event.
So I, um, I would frame this converse, this particular one, as this is a ticketed event. We have other organizations that do ticketed events here. There is also already a, um, a provision that we have to allow organizations that are doing fundraisers and so forth to do one per year at a reduced, uh, cost and so forth, and they are all already getting some of that. So, um, the question to the council is that, of the three options, to completely waive the fees, to, uh, leave things as they are, or to, uh, do a reduction, is pretty much the question before us. So, uh, is there a strong opinion, one way or another, on the part of council members to make a change? Uh, Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just like to say, for the record, um, I know we're doing this separately, it sounds like, and I'm not going to repeat myself for each, um, each vote. So I will say, just from the beginning, and I did speak at this at budget, it's, it's not new. I, um, I see that the city, we, we give the chamber approximately $16,000 a year in both, you know, trade, you know, both, both kinds of donations, um, hours, overtime, things like that. It adds up, um, to about $16,000. We have a lot of worthwhile organizations in our community who do request this, that we haven't supported in the past. And so, um, given the fact that we're already very generous, and I did take some time and, and call around, and I couldn't find personally, in Oregon, another city that supports financially their Chamber of Commerce, which is a membership-driven organization. I could be wrong, I didn't call every city, but I did call. And so for that reason, Madam Mayor, I will not be in support of the financially supporting the chamber as a, um, with, with our finances.
So, uh, Councilor, um, Council President Parsons?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, we have asked for years about a breakdown of the Kaiser First Citizen Award Banquet, you know, if they actually make money and if not, and this is the first year that we actually got a P and L. I've been to the last few, see, the community First Citizen Banquets, and it's not just a chamber event. People win these awards, they're not chamber members. They bring in, a lot of the people, actually, that are in that room, aren't even chamber members, they're part of the community. They want to see what the community does. I don't equate this with the same thing as another nonprofit fundraiser, even though it's a ticketed event. Yes, you can see from this P and L, they don't make any money, they're breaking even, but they're giving something back to the community. You know, they're supporting first citizens who mostly are not chamber members. President's Award, not necessarily chamber members. They're bringing in, I mean, I, last year can speak tenfold to that. Larry Johnson, who's been a great community member i- in this community for a long time, was awarded the President's Award, so. Larry Smith, I'm sorry, a- and so I, I will, I will actually be in support of one of these, one of these changes. So, um, I think the chamber brought us what we have asked for for years, and I, and I see their due diligence, and I, I, I've been to enough of them to know what kind of an event it is. So I'll be in support of, uh, some sort of, sort of waiver here. Thank you.
Well, um, what I'd like to do then is, uh, we'll all put a motion on the table, and we will debate it.
Awesome, I'll do that. I move that the Kaiser City Council, uh, approve, uh, number three, where we waive the room rental fee, but we charge 625 for the staffing and security costs.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council, uh, waive the fees for the, this is just for the First Citizen Banquet, and take option number three, waive the room rental fee, but charge 625 for the staffing and security costs. Discussion. Councilor Herrera?
I agree with Councilor Parsons. I think that, um, that 625 would be good, but at the same time, you know, as far as the events go, I can relate more to the, the next one, where the community thing to be, give them a better break, because that touches everybody, I think. And when we talk about equity lens, I just, I keep thinking about other people that not even know clue about the, the big event. You know, I happen to be part of it, but, um, but there's, um, it just, it doesn't affect the whole community. I think it, you know, they, they pick a few people here and there, but, um, I think that, uh, that's one that I wouldn't completely waive all fees for, uh, as far as reaching the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilor Ryan?
Thank you. I think there's a lot of great organizations who have asked us for our generous time and donation with our, uh, with our facility, and we have turned them down every time. And I don't see that we are in a position to judge that one organization is better than the other, be it cancer, be it, um, a child's funeral, be it, um, a chamber business event. I don't, I just don't want to be in that situation where we're choosing one over the other, um, when we have been consistent with our, with our discounts of, in the community. Because we bring a lot of people to the, into our community center from the community, and we offer them the same discounts for the nonprofit, so I'd like to be consistent.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just, just a second, I think what's already been raised, uh, here previously. You know, this event, um, and I've been to a lot of these events as well, whether it's in Kaiser, whether it's in Salem or elsewhere. These do attract, uh, community members as well, because there's, we're celebrating community members. Um, and, you know, I think we can point to several non-chamber members, um, who are great volunteers, you know. Just thinking about Jim Tret, uh, who does, um, an amazing level, I don't know where that guy finds the time to do the stuff, and he that guy finds the time to do this stuff, and he was completely deserving of that honor. Having said that, you know, I also think that, you know, this is more than just an organization. And I say that, I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce, here and several other chambers of Commerce. And I think in Kaiser especially, I've seen a unique level of involvement and dedication and support for the community by, specifically by members of this Chamber. And I, you know, I think this is a great way that we can help support a great organization. We don't have very many type of organizations like that, that do so much and give so much back to this community, and so I'm full support of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Freeman.
I'll echo what's said, but I think most importantly for me is, when we have asked the Chamber for either additional documentation, answering our question, Danielle Bethel, the Executive Director, or a board member, their Board President, has come forth with that information, very forthcoming, and really creating a partnership here. And I just commend them for working with the city and supplying anything that we ask for, so I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. And I would echo that, yes, the reporting and the, you know, bringing us the numbers, the actual numbers, it's a lot easier to make decisions with facts, and I really want to commend them for the work they're doing. And I would agree, the First Citizen banquet is a tremendous community event. However, it's a ticketed event, and that's where I have a problem with not, with foregoing fees for one ticketed event, but not for another. Yes, we have many, many great ticketed events that come here, and the price of the ticket, along with fundraising on the part of the organization, helps put on these large events. So in my mind, I believe it's important to be fair to the community groups here, and it's important to make sure that if it is a ticketed event, the intent of the organization is to cover the cost. No, they're not making money. This is not a fundraiser, and that's great, but they're covering the cost of putting on the event, they get community partners, and the city is a community partner in so many ways with events that they do, but I believe as a ticketed event, that event needs to stand on its own, and that a discount beyond the 25%, I believe that we're already giving them, is not consistent with what I believe is more equitable with other organizations in the community. So I'm going to be a no. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
No.
No. So motion passes for two with one absent. The noes are Ryan and Clark. Okay, let's go on to the community conversations, and the options here are to waive the, okay, options for consideration, one, grant the request for a complete rental fee waiver, two, deny the request, or three, waive the room rental fee but charge the $40, which is the staffing. We always have the hosts here to look after the building and meet the needs of the guests in the building. So Counselor, Counsel President Parsons, do you want to put a motion on the table? We can debate.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve Option Three, to waive the room rental fee but charge the $40 for the staffing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council approve the consideration for the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce Community Conversations, Item Three, to waive the room rental fees but charge the $40 for the staffing costs. Discussion. Counselor Freeman.
So I would just like some clarification, and I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but with these community conversations, this is a joint effort between, Nate, you're shaking your head, so I'm going to assume you're going to be the city's liaison, the city manager, so this is really a joint effort. So we will be supporting this, we're going to have it on our Facebook, we'll have it on our website, as much as the Chamber is, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and so we will have a place at the table. I mean, this is an equal partnership. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
Off of that, another point of clarification, and the entire community is invited, not just Chamber members.
That's correct.
And they'll, how will they be invited?
Well, through our partners in the media and through, it'll be on our Facebook page and those kinds of things as well. And the Chamber will have their outreach to the business community. I'm not sure of all the avenues that they do, but.
You can certainly recommend that they utilize business members' reader boards along River Road, so.
Well, because as was mentioned, that not all businesses are Chamber members, and I want all of them to feel invited and welcomed, and that is a complete conversation. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Anderson.
Just on that point, I think I would just say that my, I would surmise that, you know, they would take advantage of the, of all avenues of communication, you know, whether it's our local radio station, the newspaper, social media. I think the objective is very noble, I really like this whole notion of community conversations, so I would hope and expect that they would have that well-publicized.
Okay. Further discussion? And this is something that is very consistent with what we've done in the past with organizations that are holding essentially town halls. These are open to the public, there is no fee for attending, this is, all you have to do is show up, and people will be, if we need accommodation for people with ADA, we can have that conversation as well in partnership with the Chamber hosting that, because we need to make sure it's accessible. And so I'm comfortable with, this is the kind of thing that the, previously, when we were looking at how this community center is operated, what it was for, was to make sure it is a gathering place for the, for discussion, for debate, for community engagement. So I'm very comfortable with this myself as well. Counselor Herrera.
When we talk about community engagement, you know, there's a group of population in Kaiser that would not understand it, and I would like to help in that regard. As far as like, you know, I'm a member of, Chris and I, both members of St. Edward's here, and we, I go to both Masses, and I, there is an opportunity on Friday nights, Spanish Mass, to actually go there and make that announcement. And I would like to see us, back to the equity lens, do that, you know, and I would be willing to help in that, in that direction.
Love it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously with one absent. That takes us then to the monthly forums, luncheon forums. The two options are three, it's pretty much the same as was discussed above, where we can completely waive fees, deny, keep things where they are, or waive the room fees but charge the $40 for staffing. Counsel President Parsons, do you want to put a motion on the table?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve Option Two, and that's to leave it as it is, deny the request for a complete rental fee waiver.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council leave things as they are and deny the request for complete rental fee waiver for the community, I'm sorry, for the luncheons. Discussion. Counsel President Parsons.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is one of those events where this just is a Chamber event. They do bring in outside speakers once in a while, but this is basically solely, mostly Chamber members who attend this, and so that's why I opted to give the motion for denying the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Ryan.
Thank you. But do they still receive their 25% discount for being a nonprofit?
Yes.
So that still applies?
Right.
Because they were receiving it? Okay, great. Thank you.
That does not change. And for me, this is important, that we make sure that the community center, that the fees that come in help maintain it, and there's food involved, and there's more cleanup after a luncheon versus perhaps a community conversation at a town hall. So this is a different level of what we're going to need to watch out for, this investment that belongs to the whole community. All right. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously with one absent. That takes us now to Item 8b, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement for management of events, rental room, gazebo, at Kaiser Heritage Foundation. I understand that this item is going to be pulled and will be put on an agenda at a future date. Do we know when that will come back?
I anticipate the next meeting, but I needed to check with Kaiser Heritage. We need to make a few changes in the contract, so.
All right. So we're going to pull that one for right now, and it will come back at the, very likely at the earliest in the next meeting, and work on that. Let's go on then to Item 8d, a resolution approving the 2017 salary survey and implementing changes. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Michelle. Madam Mayor and Counselor. The city has both a history and a longstanding policy supporting salary surveys to be completed for unrepresented employees. The last salary survey for unrep employees was performed and implemented in 2013. The city's Personnel Policy Manual includes a timeline for salary surveys to be completed every four years. By comparison, we also do salary surveys for our represented employees, and they're reviewed every three years in connection with collective bargaining. Every four years on that timeline for unrepresented employees would support a survey being completed in fiscal year 1617 for implementation on July 1, 2017. During fiscal year 1617, staff was directed, staff being me, by the city manager to perform the unrepresented employee salary survey. Prior to that direction, at the city manager's request, I contacted our Personnel Policy Committee, PPC, to confirm their support and notified the Council early in September. The PPC consists of Mayor Clark, Counselor President Parsons, and Counselor Freeman, for those listening. Survey was to be completed in-house and include a third-party review of the city's results. This is the same approach we followed in 2013, based on the recommendation of the fiscal year 1112 Budget Committee. You may recall that that recommendation came because of the extensive cost of using external parties to do the entire survey. The survey's been completed, the third-party review's been performed by Local Government Personnel Institute, or LGPI. The attached survey, proposed adjustments are the result of the survey following initial review by staff, additional review and confirmation of the results by LGPI, review by the city manager and department directors, and review by the Personnel Policy Committee. As you know, I provided information to the Council at the end of June and invited you to contact me, or Chris, or Tim, or any one of the Policy, our Personnel Policy Committee members with your questions. The survey results recommend increases for nine of our current 39 classifications. This is significantly less than in the past years, where more than half the classifications were recommended to be adjusted. At this time, there are a total of 14 employees potentially impacted, spanning six departments. We now request approval to implement the proposed adjustments effective retroactively to July 1, 2017. The fiscal impact of the salary survey is 52,300 citywide, represents the 2017-18 cost to the city. This includes 45,300 in general fund costs, which 32,100 is for the police department and 1,400 for parks. This is not within the current budget, but it's before you as a budget adjustment at tonight's meeting. Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Counselor Ryan.
This may be the wrong place, so if it is, I can change it, but based on what you said and what in my reading, it said that it was for unrepresented employees. Aren't all of the police staff represented by?
No.
No.
The leadership team is not represented. That includes sergeants up to the chief.
The rest are union.
And one admin staff and a support supervisor. The rest are all represented.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good question. All right. Any other questions on the staff report? Okay, seeing none. Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve Resolution R. 2017, approving the 2017 salary survey and implementing changes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, approving the 2017 salary survey and implementing changes. Discussion. And I want to give a shout-out, and I'll come to you, Counsel Freeman. When we brought this in-house, we were spending a great deal, these salary surveys are not cheap if they're done right, and this goes to the expertise that we have in Michelle DePina, to be able to do this kind of work and get the kind of data that we need to make sure that the salaries we are paying for both our represented and our non-represented employees are appropriate for the work, the position descriptions, and for the area in which we live. We want to make sure that our employees are paid appropriately. We're not at the high end, we are not at the low end, but we want to make sure that we pay appropriately, and we have people that do tremendous work, and that experience that we are able to retain is extremely valuable. So that's my plug. Counsel Freeman.
Well, I think you stole almost everything that I was going to say, but I do want to give a shout-out to Michelle and the staff with this, because, one, it's commendable that we do it on a consistent basis, because this is one of the things due to cost, even though we have brought it internally, in many years past, we have foregone this because of the cost to do this, and so we have made a consistent effort to do this every four years, and we follow through with that, so thank you for that. I also, because it escapes me right off the top of my head, we are also part of a group that we supply our information, and other city jurisdictions do as well, and so we are able to match our positions with other cities of similar size, so we are part of a founding group for this.
That group name would be TECC, or Total Employer Cost of Compensation. It's a project that's run out of Portland State University.
So we're very instrumental in that, and we can thank Michelle for that as well. This provides invaluable information to us, and it's a great resource, so we're very, very lucky. So thank you.
Indeed. Counselor Herrera.
Yeah, I also agree on that. The one question I get is, what do you say to a citizen that says, that's a lot of money to spend for people to get raises and they hire in there? $45,000, and we're required to do it every four years, is what I understand. Is that correct?
Our policy says that that is our commitment to review salary surveys for unrepresented employees every four years.
But I thought Chris had said that it wasn't a year thing, or was? You have to do it every four years?
Every four years. That is what is in our policy.
And it's gone, it's, what was it, last time we did this?
2013.
Pardon?
2013 is when we did it last.
Was the cost in 2013?
I can tell you that.
Trying to figure out how high this is going.
It was actually, it was.
The cost was approximately, let's see, $56,000 in that year.
Big chunk, wow.
Yeah.
So what was the answer? What do you say to a citizen?
I would say that these increases are bringing the classifications within 5% of the market. We're not paying them extensively more. In most cases, we're bringing them just within 5%, so we're not going above. They're not even even in some cases with the comparable cities. I think the only way that we avoid this cost is we allow our non-reps to fall below the market price for their positions, and that would cost us more money in the long run. And the reason that would cost more is we'd probably have some turnover, that's expensive and hard costs, and decreased productivity. We would probably have morale issues, because our employees would determine the city doesn't value their performance the same as their coworkers, or the same as other municipalities. So they're being asked to do the same work for less money. It's also likely we'd have difficulties recruiting the exceptional people we need to work here, and that's really important, because we, as you know from the FTE report we do every year with the Budget, we do the same work as other cities with less than half the employees. And the only way that we can do that is if we have really good people in every one of our positions. So right now, we're only paying around the same as everybody else, but we're going out and looking for the very best folks to do that work.
And if I could tag on to that, so pay. And if I could tag onto that, so, pay, what we learn in city manager school when we talk about things like this, is that pay typically doesn't become a thing for people until it's a thing, right? Until they look out in the market and they realize that they're getting paid significantly less than other people who do their job elsewhere. And then it becomes an ethical issue for them. Then they feel intrinsically unvalued, and then they become unhappy. So, that's when it becomes a thing. Just as an example of where this could create an issue for us, and you'll notice, $45,000 of this cost is in the...
General fund.
Is in the general fund. The vast majority of that is for one classification in the police department, and that's sergeants, okay? Sergeants are outside of the union. They directly supervise the uniformed officers who are in the union. So, not keeping them, not keeping them in-market would create a compaction between those they supervise and themselves, and in many cases, given overtime and whatnot, would result in those they supervise making significantly more than they do in any given year. So, that can be a morale issue, and then that could also make it difficult for those uniformed officers who become long-tenured with us and want an opportunity to grow with us. It's difficult for them to look at the next position up and say, "So, I'm going to take on more responsibility, more authority, it's a harder job, potentially more hours, and I'm going to get paid less to do it."
Public works.
Public works. No. So, that's, I mean, so, you know, that's a real scenario that we could be looking at in that one particular classification, and that's the majority of the cost in the general fund. So, for that one classification of sergeants and the PD.
I was recently at a meeting with another organization, and their habit has been to look at classification and compensation on an individual basis. They've looked at that position when they have to recruit. And the disparity that has created within the organization has created a great deal of turnover and chaos. So, as a member of that particular Board of Directors, I am, I'm on the side of the group of people that says, "Let's do a thorough look," because when you have new people coming in, they're being paid at a higher level than people who have been doing the job, it creates a great deal of angst within the organization, and also inconsistency, and it makes it very difficult to recruit. That was another issue that that organization was having, was recruitment, because they didn't, hadn't already done the work. The work that we have pre-done has allowed us to do some of the laterals that we've gotten, and I'll just call it out. We're more than happy to steal experience. People want to come here, but it has to be because we have already established those baselines for compensation.
Just as a point of interest, I'll mention, so, in my wife's company that she's worked for for over 20 years, discussing pay and compensation amongst employees is a terminable offense within that company. You are not allowed to discuss compensation with your fellow workers because of that issue, because you have long-term employees who have been held at certain salaries, new employees brought in from other competitors, given bonuses, et cetera, et cetera, and they come in at higher levels, et cetera. It becomes, it becomes a very dangerous topic of discussion amongst employees, and so, they're not allowed to discuss it. That would be great, except for a public agency, and all of our salaries are published by Eric.
As they should be.
Every year. So, it's not feasible for us to tell our employees not to talk to their employee, to their coworkers or other coworkers from different agencies about compensation. So, therefore, you know, that's just one additional added piece of pressure for us to stay within-market.
Okay. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've read the report, and this came up at budget. I know it was requested to do a salary survey, and I'll be honest, I have a lot of thoughts. I think we have some great quality people here, especially in our police department, as we know. I am sitting here thinking, you know, at budget, as a budget committee, we passed salary raises at $68,000 in March. And now, we are currently in the middle range, it sounds like a little bit high, a little bit low on certain positions, but we don't have, we don't have a high turnover. We're in the middle, we have valued employees, and we, the timing is, is, I think, poor. And I'll tell you why. Not because the employees don't do or don't deserve it, it's not a quality issue, in my opinion. It's, we are asking our citizens and our residents and our voters to pay, help us get five new police officers, help us pay for parks and get it cleaned up and the maintenance and safety for our kids, and we're going to turn around and say, "But, we're going to do staff raises here," like, two weeks later. I'm sorry, and for that reason, I'm a firm no on this. That's 123,000 in raises in three months, and right when we're asking our taxpayers to help us make things right, because our budget is struggling. And I personally don't want to answer that question of why I'm giving raises at the same time that, that we're charging our citizens. So, for that reason, I will be a firm no. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You mind, or no? Okay.
I'm actually, I'm going to take a slightly different tack on that. And, you know, and I understand that. And one of the things I'm really glad that we do this separately from the budget is we want people to understand, you know, the different pieces that have to go into our classification and compensation for public servants, because we want them to know that there is, there is cost of living. We have contractual agreements, and that was the vast majority of what went into the budgetary process this year. You're right. We have a negotiated contract with our public works union and our police union. It's the unrepresented that by policy this city has chosen to treat with the same level of consideration for their salary ranges. We don't have to. Like I said, that other organization that I'm on a board for has chosen to do on an individual basis. But, the problem is that we end up with gaps or difficulty recruiting. So, I understand, yes, we're asking the citizens of Kaiser to pay more for our unrepresented employees in a data-driven, you know, very well-analyzed, market-rate manner, just like our represented employees do. We, in my opinion, a represented employee or a non-represented employee should be paid appropriate for the work, rather than whether or not they are represented by a union. So, that is why I favor, A, doing this, but B, more importantly, making sure we have the data to demonstrate the appropriate level of compensation for these positions that are, that we hire for in the city. So, I took it a little bit differently. Having it separate, it makes it very clear to the public, yes, we took a look at this. Yes, it is going to cost us more, and yes, it is appropriate, we're going to get the value, in my opinion, from the employees in service to the community.
So, follow-up on that, Madam Mayor, is, wouldn't it be, I guess, in my opinion, it seems like we have a whole budget committee, and that's what, that's what they're there for. Why wouldn't we do this at the same time? Since we just gave salary increases, why wouldn't we do it, looking at it at the next budget process, as a committee with all voices present? Why wouldn't, why would we overshadow that now and not do that then?
It's a separate process to do the salary survey, and it's only done every four years, so it is not something that we're going to see at budget next year, because these raises will be folded in with the raises that come in for the 1819 budget. So, we won't look at this, the salary survey, again for another four years.
Why wouldn't we look at it with budget?
Why wouldn't we have this all ready to go prior to budget?
Either we could have done it this past budget, or we could do it at the next budget, but then you're including all the budget committees and all the people present who make that decision. I don't understand why we would do in the middle a budget, such a large budget item, without the budget committee, and why couldn't we bring the salary survey? I'm not saying to negate it, it's obviously very important, but bring it to the table at budget. That would make sense to me.
The reason is because the salary survey indicates the level of compensation that the unrepresented employees are, would be appropriate for those positions. So, the budget committee is going to look at the allocation of resources, but I don't believe it is up to the budget committee to determine whether or not unrepresented employees should be compensated appropriately. I think that's a council decision, because it's a policy decision. Yes, we, the money is going to be allocated by the budget committee, but the compensation and classification is a policy decision that we have chosen over the last many years to make sure that we take care of the unrepresented, the same way we take care of the union-represented employees. So, that's why I believe it should be separate.
Okay. I just, again, I won't disagree or agree with that policy, it's obviously been in place, but 123,000 in increases when we're asking our taxpayers to step up is, I think, very unfair. Thank you.
Fair enough. Did you want to weigh in? All right. Anybody else? Good conversation. We have a motion on the table, correct?
Yes, correct.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
No.
Motion passes 5-1 with one absent, and the no was Counselor Ryan. All right. Good discussion. That will take us then to item 8E, a resolution authorization for supplemental budget, 2017 salary survey, and Parks Matching Grant. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council. Tonight I have before you two supplemental budget adjustments. With the adoption of the 2017 salary survey for the non-represented employees, the first adjustment would be to make the appropriations to be able to implement that, that change. And as indicated before, the total amount is 52,300, of which 45,300 impacts the general fund. In order to be able to do this, obviously, when the budget was put together in April and May, we still had several months' worth of revenues yet to show up at our doorstep. This, this impact will be able to be absorbed through additional working capital as we roll into the 1718 fiscal year. Our revenues have been coming in a little bit on the hot side, hotter than I had anticipated at budget time, primarily had a big uptick in liquor tax, which is kind of surprising. I was anticipating actually a decrease in liquor tax, and we're actually up about 7% now. So, a big, big swing in the last, last quarter of the year.
Because last year, that was down significantly, correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Oh, it's nice to be back on the right track.
I suppose so. The other, other piece is franchise fees. We've seen some increases higher than anticipated. Sanitation has been up. We've also seen some increases in electric. Still waiting for our two major franchise fees to come in, but everything is looking fairly positive at this point. So, good news between last April and now. So, that's how we're going to be able to implement the salary survey. The second supplemental budget item is just a carryover from fiscal year 1617. The Parks Group had a matching grant that they had given out. They thought the work would be done by the end of fiscal year 1617. It was not. So, we're taking the appropriations that we didn't spend last year, moving it to this year, and this is for the covered shelter at the sand volleyball pits. And with that, if you have any questions, I would be free to address those.
Right. Questions on the staff report? So, you said something that I think I want to circle back on. So, a lot of these funds have come in at a rate higher than, that we anticipated, and that's something we do on purpose, where we anticipate our revenues conservatively, and then are happy to make adjustments for more coming in, but we don't want to overpromise and under-deliver, rather do the other way around. So, a lot of the salary survey, the increase because of that is being absorbed not by, is being absorbed by the fact that we have more revenues coming in, and that can address those increases.
That is correct.
Okay. Good news. Any further discussion, or comment, or questions on the staff report? Counselor Herrera?
Just a clarification. On these, these salaries, are you going to prorate them from July 1st, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Right. And if you all will recall, it was on the agenda prior to, at the last meeting, but we kind of hit that midnight hour, and we were kind of done. At least I was. I'll speak for myself. Counselor President Parsons would like to put a motion on the table, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve Resolution R. 2017, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, 2017 Salary Survey, and Parks Matching Grant.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, 2017 Salary Survey, and Parks Matching Grant. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. I'm, and, Tim, if you don't mind, just simply, can you explain how they're connected? You're using one for the other, is that correct?
The two adjustments are not connected. Just for the sake of convenience, I put the Parks Matching Grant and the salary survey on the same, the same staff report.
So, is it two separate votes? No. We're doing it as one resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-1 with one absent, but no was Counselor Ryan. All right. Let's go to item 8F, which is a resolution establishing the amount of the sewer system development charge for wastewater treatment facilities, repealing R. 2016-2701. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Counsel. It's a housekeeping measure with regard to our neighbor to the south, the city of Salem, that operates the Willow Lake Wastewater Treatment Facility. We have a IGA, or intergovernmental agreement with Salem, in which we agree that we will collect SDCs, system development charges, which are charged against properties that, on a development basis, when they develop, they pay different transportation, sewer, water, parks, et cetera, SDCs. Salem, we have two sewer SDCs in the city, one for Kaiser, for the transmission lines, and one that's a pass-through to Salem for the treatment plant. And the amount of the wastewater SDCs as a pass-through to Salem is being increased. And so, I have the resolution attached, along with the amounts set forth in that resolution. The total is for a regular three-quarter meter or less for properties is 300, $289. And so, that resolution is attached. I'll note for the mayor that we did not do a public hearing, since we only had this one item, and so, it's appropriate under state law to ask for public comment with regard to these fees. For counsel, I might remind you, is we have several fees on an evening, we will notice those for public hearing. State law does not require a formal public hearing. When we only have one, we don't spend the money on the notice, and, but we do need to ask for public comment, so I would ask the mayor to do so, and then if there's no further questions, adopt the attached resolution. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this issue? Welcome to, let us know what you think. All right. Counselor President Parsons, would you put a motion on the table, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, establishing the amount of the sewer system development charge for wastewater treatment facilities, repealing Resolution R. 2016-2701.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, establishing the amount of the sewer system development charge for wastewater treatment facilities, repealing Resolution R. 2016-2701. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes unanimously with one absent. That takes us now to the consent calendar. Counselor President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are three items on the consent calendar tonight. A is a resolution regarding the evaluation of the city attorney. B is a resolution regarding the evaluation of the city manager. And C is a resolution authorizing the disposition of surplus property, which is police department vehicle.
Are there any polls? Counselor President Parsons?
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second. The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Counsel liaison reports. We are on track tonight, folks. Counselor Anderson, shall we start with you, sir?
Sure. Mine's pretty brief. I don't have any to offer tonight. Thank you.
Okay, then.
Well, I guess it's my turn.
I guess it is your turn.
I didn't mention this last time, but we, officially, I became a member of the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Commission.
Counsel.
Counsel, yeah. And that was pretty nice over at the county building there. My stuff was pretty much, I've got, I've got events coming up with Parks tomorrow, and then I'm going to attend the Latinx Public Service in Portland, Thursday and Friday. going to attend the Latinx Public Service in Portland Thursday and Friday. I did go to the Kirk Trader Town Hall, was hosted by Commissioner Cameron, and that was very interesting. It was a lot of people. It was a packed house. It was very civil and very good discussions. And also, Wednesday night at Silverton High School, Ron Wyden will be there for Town Hall. I'm going to attend that. Also, I wanted to mention that I will be going to San Francisco next week. My wife and I will go see Miguel Gomez and Christian Arroyo and Dan Slenia, three members of the San Francisco Giants. So, we're going to be up there watching the Giants. I'm a Dodger fan, though. Yeah, make clear. Thank you.
You know, sometimes you have to have a talk between northern and southern California. Way to go for the team. I love it. Council President Parsons?
Well, I've been busy. Wonder what you guys were doing. I've been busy.
Is this something about an eclipse?
No. I don't even want to talk about that. No, no. So, we had National Night Out last week. It was wonderful. I rode with Officer Lopez, and he was fantastic, so I want to do that again. We went to like four or five different neighborhoods. It was so hot, but a lot of brave souls were out there, still cooking on the barbecue. Didn't matter that it was one hundred and five, they were still doing it. So, we attended, we had good, people talked a lot about, you know, the new fees and all this kind of stuff, and all in all, it was a very positive experience, so I really enjoyed it. So, I want to thank the police department for helping us put that on. Appreciate it. Yes, so, yes, on the twenty-first of August, we have this little thing happening, and as you know, I've been working with Kaiser Parks Foundation in bringing some folks to our town down at Kaiser Rapids Park, and so, right now, we're almost sold out, but I am looking for volunteers. We need a lot of volunteers just to kind of help clean up and make sure we that our people that visit our town know that we're provide them with security and safety and that they can enjoy our town without any other things happening. So, I'm looking for some volunteers for some shifts. If you go to KaiserEclipse.com, you can sign up there. Also, looking for some donations of water. As you know, water is of a short supply with the vendors because they don't know if they're going to get it down here. So, if you'd like to donate water, please contact me at ParsonsM@kaiser.org, and I'd be happy to pick it up, and I'm storing it in my garage. Okay, so, enough about the eclipse. Oh, wait, T-shirts. Could you show the T-shirts? So, we do have T-shirts for sale. These, by the way, were created by McNeary High School Graphic Design Department and printed in their screen printing shop. Okay? We're selling them for fifteen dollars, and you can buy them before if you'd like. Again, contact me. My garage is open. Okay, so, okay, that's enough on the eclipse. Just know that we're that August twenty-second can't come soon enough, really. All right, so then, so then I had personal policy last week, and Michelle's doing some really good work, and I really like being on that committee. It's pretty cool. So, this week, I have planning commission on Wednesday. We have the Marion County Commissioners Breakfast on Thursday, and is Councilor Reed going to be gone this Thursday? She's said that she would not be here. She's gone this weekend, next week? Okay. So, well, so I'm looking for, I guess, a third person to join, the mayor and myself, on Thursday morning. And then Thursday night, I have
Ryan said she would take it.
I'm sorry?
Councilor Ryan said she would be happy to.
And then on this Thursday night at six o'clock down at Kaiser Rapids Park, we do have another eclipse meeting. I'm sorry, I thought I was done with that, but I wasn't. So, I'm, that's it. I'm done. Until next time. Thank you.
Some people might say occasionally, you're in the dark. Thank you. It's one person. Okay. I guess I better keep my day job, is that what I'm hearing? Council Freeman, bail me out here.
So, I just participated in National Night Out, too, so kudos to Dorothy Deal and Lieutenant Copeland. It was great. Appreciate the, I call them goodie bags, but since I've been on council, I believe it's the first year we've actually had bags of items in there that were left over from blast camp, and it was really nice to be able to hand out some sunglasses, wristbands, and whatever else was in the bag. So, I appreciate that. I had the opportunity to ride with Officer Ricketts, who I know some of his family, but he didn't know that till I actually got in the car with him, and I had the pleasure, or he had the unpleasure, my stepson is a cadet, so he also rode with us. So, we had the Freeman tag team, full disclosure, I let everyone know that he was my stepson, but he had the bag of goodies, so he enacted with all the kids. We did two stops in West Kaiser and two out north, and usually, I never get out of West Kaiser. I love West Kaiser, but it's nice to see another part of town, so I appreciate going out north. I did participate in the Personal Policy Committee. This week, we do have Thursday night, the tenth, the Traffic, Bikeways, Pedestrian Safety Committee here at six P.M. And just again, a shout-out for the Bicycle Repair and Tire Pump that's right outside City Hall, so please take advantage of that. And then on the seventeenth, we do have the Volunteer Coordinating Committee at six P.M. And one thing, because the mayor was so quick on when we voted for Carla, we had two people apply for that position, and she was selected out of the bucket.
Oh.
So, we haven't had to do that for a really long time on the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, and we didn't have the official bucket, but we did use, I think, the trash can, so.
You should have postponed the vote for the official bucket.
So, we had to explain what the official bucket was to those two, but again, great applicants, there's other committees that they're interested in, so we will see the person that was unsuccessful for this committee, but apply for some others. So, I just want to commend everyone that's stepping forward to volunteer for our committee, so, thank you.
I love it. Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been busy. It's my basketball season for summer ball, so it's been crazy, 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 sunburnt, but crazy busy. But I think out of all the meetings I've had, I've had several, but I think my highlight was our National Night Out, and I was able to ride with a reserve, and I know him by his first name, but not his last name, but great, great, great guy. Knew he was moving to Kaiser, so I was excited, introduced him to all his neighbors, and we made it to eight barbecues, ate at the last one, and talked a lot about what's going on in Kaiser and, you know, and the fees and things like that, and really, really opened up about just conversations about what's going on, and people were engaging, and it was really, it was really my highlight, so thank you very much.
It was a lot of fun. Thank you very much. Just a couple of things to add to that. National Night Out was a fabulous evening, heat notwithstanding. You know, the people of Kaiser, we're going to get together anyway, you know, we're not, we're a lot tougher than that, so people had a good time. I got to ride with Officer Carrie Anderson. We visited three and a half parties. I said a half because they were pretty much wrapping it by the time we got to the fourth one. Great conversations with folks. One of the surprises tied into the conference I went to just prior to that, that was the Oregon Mayors Association, which was held in Lebanon this year. I got to tour the new Oregon Veterans Home. Folks, go on the website, take a look at that. It is an absolutely spectacularly beautiful facility that truly honors the veterans of our state. The Oregon Veterans Department and the nonprofit that runs that home should be very proud, we as Oregonians, should be very proud of the care we are providing for veterans in our state. We got to tour, I think it was Bravo House. They have Alpha, Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, and Delta, Delta being memory care, state-of-the-art nursing care, details like a flag etched in the window, and the eating places as a canteen, just things like that that make it feel like home. Absolutely wonderful. Also, got to tour the, it's called Western University, which is a health sciences university, and it's an osteopathic medical school in Lebanon, Oregon. They are also now getting ready to open a, another health sciences facility in partnership with Oregon State University and Lynn Bennett Community College. So, we are growing our own, folks. This is fabulous. We're helping us provide medical professionals that will be trained here, and will be more likely to stay here. Now, how does this tie into National Night Out? The third party I get to, I'm talking to a couple, and it turns out that she is a doctor with Kaiser Permanente, loves living where they do because she can walk to work. He is one of the twelve doctors that brought the Western University Health Sciences School to Oregon, and he lives right here. He was also instrumental in the Veterans Home because he is also a military doctor. So, we have folks in this community that helped invest and create these fabulous facilities to train up medical professionals and provide services in our state. So, that was one of the highlights and the surprises for the evening. I want to give a shout-out to Mayor Paul Aziz for really rolling out the red carpet for the mayors. This annual conference is an opportunity for mayors from across the state, big cities, small cities, experienced and novices, and two years ago, I was one of the rookies, and it was a great chance to learn from people who do the work across the state and learn from their experiences, both positive and, yeah, this really works, and you might not want to do that. The surprise for the weekend was at the banquet, which I was not able to attend. I had an event to go to with my husband from West Valley Fire District. At the end of the banquet, two mayors stood up before a now-former third mayor, the mayor of Pendleton, Paul Hauck, and exchanged wedding vows. So, I want to extend congratulations to Mayor George Endicott of Redmond and Mayor Chris Annett Clark of Sherwood, who are now husband and wife. It was an absolutely spectacular event. I got to see pictures, so. It was, you never know. Other things coming up? Lot of transportation stuff, especially now that the transportation package was passed by the legislature. That's going to mean some real money coming in for Kaiser, as well as for our metropolitan area, for our road maintenance, as well as for transit services. So, that package is going to mean some real service improvements here, and I'm very excited to look forward to how we'll be able to make some more progress on our transportation system plan. Coming up, I know we're really, really, really tired of it. Two weeks from now, it's all over, the eclipse. So, I want to remind folks, just kind of get ready for it so you can be part of the solution and not part of the problem. If you need to fill up your gas tank, please do it prior to. Fill up your gas tank because we will be the reservoir of fuel if we fill up our gas tanks several days in advance. It'll allow the trucking companies to come in and fill the tanks for our visitors to be able to come, enjoy Kaiser, and then leave. So, that's important. Food, water, you know, just store up a little bit so we have, we have things that we need. Our visitors are going to be shopping here. That's a good thing, but we want to make sure they have stuff to buy and that we, our needs are taken care of as well. So, get ready, folks, and then get ready to have a really good time. This is a very cool event. We're going to have stuff going on here, and I do want to clarify because my phone just started, almost danced itself off the table after the announcement came out from the city of Salem. We are not going to have camping in our parks except for the already-planned event at Kaiser Rapids Park. So, please, folks, if you think you're coming to camp in Kaiser for free, no, our parks close at dark. The only one that's going to be open for camping is Kaiser Rapids Park, and that, you have to have a reservation, and it does cost because the people of Kaiser expect that visitors here are going to pay for the cost of camping out here, just like we do for any other event. So, there will not be camping in Kaiser Parks before the eclipse. Right? And Bill's going, mhm. Okay. Just want to clarify. Also want to give a shout-out to the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee. We just appointed a new member. The flood poles and kiosks are done. Go down to Kaiser Rapids. It is really cool. Those of us who are here ninety-six, that was a big flood. Look at the ones that went higher and go, oh, I'm glad I wasn't here then. Beautiful work. Thank you to Kaiser Points of Interest. So, that's all I got tonight. So, let's go on then to other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members or staff, an opportunity to bring newer old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Tim?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Joe? No? Chief?
Nothing.
Really? Okay.
Chief, actually, I have something for you. I had a citizen approach me at church yesterday, and he wanted to let me know about an interaction he had with one of our police officers. That was Kevin Renfro. He got his vehicle smacked by a kid over at the Dairy Queen parking lot. He called up the next morning, you know, it's not, you know, a nine-one-one thing. Okay, we'll have somebody call you. He was deeply impressed with how quickly the officer got back to him, how polite and courteous and thorough he was, and he had resolution of the issue in very short order. So, he wanted to make sure that we knew that, and I want to pass that on to Officer Renfro for being a great ambassador of our police department to the community.
He's our most recent hire, a lateral from Monmouth, and he hits on all cylinders. He's a great hire for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you, Chris. Just a couple of things. For those of you that haven't noticed, going out toward the freeway, Lock Haven's being paved. It's being done at night. They should be done, I think they'll finish tonight with putting the pavement down. They'll have to come back and adjust manhole lids, so there will be some lane restrictions. That'll be daytime work, but it'll be single lane restrictions while they're doing that work. Striping is scheduled to go down before the end of the week. I'm not sure which day, assuming the paving goes down tonight. And then the pathways, the new pathways at Kaiser Rapids Park have been graded, rocked, and are being paved tomorrow.
Woo-hoo!
So, that's the first piece of the overall grant project. That'll be done. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for August twenty-eighth with the company doing the port-in-place surfacing at the Big Toy. So, that'll be happening soon. Right after that, Big Toy will be closed starting September ninth for the volunteers to come in and remove the six-hundred-plus cubic yards of chips out of the Big Toy to prepare for the port-in-place surfacing. We expect the Big Toy will be closed until about October fifteenth at this point. I'll have a better date after the meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Very good.
Fantastic.
Nate?
The only thing I wanted to point out is we have a new art display here in our gallery. It's from the Red Raven Cooperative Art Association. There's some really fun pieces out there, and I would urge everybody to avail yourself of the opportunity to see some very fine art.
Fabulous.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. So, that takes us then to written communications. I have a few things that were left over from the last meeting, so want to get those on the record tonight. One of them is from the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association, from Jason Brand, who is the president and CEO of the association. It's a rather lengthy letter, but he is mostly addressing issues regarding Airbnb, which most folks know is a, where people can rent out rooms or homes and so forth that are not necessarily a hotel. The issue is the full collection of lodging taxes that are owed to cities. This is something I don't believe that we've addressed, but other cities are beginning to address. As your statewide association for hospitality, our position continues to be that ordinance changes must take place if local municipalities have a goal of collecting all lodging taxes from lodging stays occurring in your community. The latest report outlines the dangers of states and local governments entering into voluntary collection agreements with Airbnb, and they link a report regarding that and the problems that they believe are, have been created with Airbnb agreements. So, the association is requesting that we look into the matter, and they are willing to meet with us and help out in any way that they can in answering questions regarding collecting transient occupancy taxes from people who are, use our renting out rooms through Airbnb. I will leave this here for our consideration and see if we want to take that matter up at some point, probably in the near future. I got a letter from a citizen who unfortunately did not sign it, and normally, I wouldn't read them, but it's something I heard from several people, so I'm going to go ahead and read it. Channel Two played a video today, and this is back in July, about a woman whose home burned down from kids shooting off fireworks. They said to pay attention and call police when it happens in your neighborhood. In Kaiser, we've had the same problem for two years now, two years, and no one stops them. Last year and the year before, people on our street shot off big fireworks just before dark till nearly midnight. We had our water hoses ready to spray the sparks if we needed them. Luckily for us, the roofs did not catch fire, but why don't the police see them when they're shooting up high in the sky for almost three hours? shooting up high in the sky for almost three hours? They're not the little smokey ones or sparklers. And they're noise with a lot of exploding, so they're big enough to see from a way off. We live on Barnick, and some of the folks live on Katy and Leewood. We don't want our houses to burn down like the lady on Channel 2. Can the police come by and stop them, so we don't get our houses burned down? So we got a lot of complaints this year. Okay, we, royal we. I got a number of complaints this year about the fireworks, so can Chief or Chris want to touch on that briefly?
Yeah, we respond on fireworks calls all night long, July 4th. I mean, it's crazy. There's just fireworks everywhere. And some of them are very illegal. There are these huge mortar things. I mean, it's, it's, I don't know what to tell you. Our procedures to go by, and so a lot of it's complaint-driven. Neighbors complain. By the way, we haven't ever received a complaint on Barnick, as I understand it. If neighbors complain about people setting off fireworks, we'll go tell them they've got to shut them down. They get called back again, and we'll cite them. Usually, they just shut them down. I don't know what to tell you. It's a problem across the state. There's just fireworks going off everywhere.
Aren't they getting more powerful, or is that just my old imagination?
They're getting more powerful.
Because my windows were rattling pretty good on some of them.
Yeah.
So. Some people have a lot of disposable income.
We should have a part of that, and find...
Seriously.
We could report maybe a police officer, too, with them.
Hmm.
I bet you they'd add up.
So anyway, well, I appreciate you letting us know. And so if people have, if there's folks in the neighborhood, go ahead and call, and I know that you guys will respond as quickly as you can.
Yeah, the fireworks calls are just stacked up, one after another. So we, you know, you call, we'll get there, I don't know, 30 minutes or an hour, because we're going to the ones that are in the queue. I don't know what to tell you. It's unlike, it's unlike, it's unlike everything else we do. It's just a flaunting of the law. It's across the city. Everybody does it. I'm not sure what the answer is. July 5th, it's over.
Mostly.
There were a lot of illegal fireworks several days after July 4th.
Yeah.
And during the worms for a few days.
July 8th, it's over.
July 8th. Yeah, and, yeah, true. There was some, people had some leftovers, and/or maybe they went back up to Washington and got some more. I don't know. But especially when it's on a weekend, it's really bad. This year, being a weeknight, it wasn't quite so bad. But I got a number of complaints this year, and I don't know what the answer is either, but I think this is a community-wide and indeed statewide issue, where some reasonableness needs to maybe return, but I'm not sure how that happens. I mean, you can't legislate brains. I did want to do one more shout-out, and thank you, everybody, for your patience on that, and that is to Nate. During the hearing we had on the Area B Plan Amendment, I was particularly struck on how that you made sure that one of the neighbors who had not received notification, you went to her home and made sure it was handled, and you had a conversation with her. That's the kind of customer service that we talk about here, and it was just a great example. You didn't hesitate. Of course, you went over and talked to her. That's just who you are, but it's also the culture here. And I just want to give you a shout-out and a thank you for taking that time, that personal touch, and letting somebody who had a concern know that she was heard, and could answer her questions. So thank you, Nate. All right. Agenda input. Councilor Anderson, we will be meeting the 21st.
I'm on my best to get here.
Okay. So August 14th, we will be doing a work session at the Kaiser Community Food Bank. I know it says 5:45. Tracy?
It's 5:30.
We are going to need to meet at 5:30, because the food bank opens at 6 o'clock, and the Director Kurt McCormick would like to have us have some time to go through it before customers arrive. And all of us are welcome, of course, any community members are welcome to come and help volunteer at the food bank, to learn more about what's going on there.
And that's where?
That's going to be at, the Kaiser Community Food Bank is at Lutheran...
Lutheran Church?
Faith Lutheran Church on River Road. So that will be noticed. It'll be on our website, where we're going to be, and anybody from the community is absolutely welcome to come. Come see the food bank, see how it operates, and ask questions on how we all can continue to meet the needs of people in our community year-round. Then we will meet in regular session on August 21st at 7:00 PM. And, you know, if we run into some difficulties, just communicate, let us know, and we'll try to muddle through if we, we should be able to get a quorum. I know Councilor Parsons will be exhausted.
Sleep. Some of us are on vacation that weekend, so it's okay.
You know what? It's how we take one for the team, right? So.